Welcome to the County Regional Planning Commission to order, please. Would you please stand with me?
I'll lead the prayer and Steve would you lead the pledge. Goodbye with a cleese. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us and we got the dawn of a new year, Heavenly Father, and we thank you for that and may we use it to our betterment and to the betterment of our county, Heavenly Father. And we pray that you just be with us tonight and the liberations we make and the things that we study and we pray that you will just guide us through this. Heavenly Father, we say a special thanks for the Brandon family, Heavenly Father, Mr. Willie Brandon, we pray for his family and the legacy that he leaves for this county and the work ethic that he had and we thank you for him. We pray that you just be with us tonight and all of tomorrow's in Christ's name. Amen.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unencumbered and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It be seated. Yeah, would you call roll please, ma'am?
Martha Allen. Stephen Barnes. Sorry, this is an old, I didn't do this one. This was done for me, sorry. Richie Bowlen. Veronica Buchanan. Gary Farley. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vought. Vincent Wendro. Craig Lynch.
Present.
And we have four.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the reading of our minutes. Thank you. Do you have a second? All present, motion say aye. All opposed, o, motion carries. Codes Department, David.
Single-family dwelling and building permit activities on the table, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Doug, anything withdrawn or deferred? Reclassification request?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one item on the agenda tonight. This is a item regarding our comprehensive plan. As you know, the county is in the process of developing a comprehensive plan for the future growth of the unincorporated area of Rutherford County over the next 15 to 20 years, as well as what we're calling our planning tools update. When this phase of the project is done, we'll be going into the zoning resolution and subdivision regulation update. What we have before you tonight are the proposed goals and objectives and vision statement for the comprehensive plan. This is really the foundation, if you will, of the plan and we presented this to the community on October, I believe it was 22nd of last year. We did receive a number of comments at that meeting, as well as after the meeting with some of the steering committee members. It was a very well-attended meeting. We're very happy with the attendance that we had and the comments that we received from that. What this, we're doing with this tonight is kind of what we're hoping for is to get kind of an endorsement, if you will, from the planning commission, just kind of basically kind of reiterating that they like the direction that we're going in at this point. I will say that there has been a lot of work going on behind the scenes with different activities and whatnot going on, so although it hasn't been the forefront of the news the last several weeks, I do assure you that there has been work progressing. The consultant team has been very, working very hard going forward with this, as has staff. With that, Mr. Tim Roach from Parsons Brinkerhoff is present tonight. He'll be going through just a brief presentation of the vision statement and the goals and objectives. We also have several members of the steering committee with us in the back. I see Mr. Mark Lee, Blake Smith, Mayo Taylor, Susan Allen, and Steve Schroeder, Schrader, excuse me, is there as well, although he's not on the committee, he's been a integral part of this, providing his input. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Tim Roach from Parsons Brinkerhoff.
I appreciate your, appreciate your holding, starting the meeting up until I could arrive. Thank you so much. Elizabeth knows I'm generally late everywhere I go, tonight's no exception. Where do you want me to stand?
If you do have to vote it, that way we can everybody get you on camera.
Very good. And thank you all, it's good to see everybody. As Doug noted, we're at a, the comprehensive plan process has got several distinct stages to it. We've been through one definable part of it, which is a review of the existing conditions of the county. We've been through a surveying, a community participation process, and pulling together a lot of data and a lot of information that we compiled into a report that's been presented to the county and it's posted on the county's website. And moving on from that, once we've established where we sort of are with the existing conditions, the next step is to look ahead and where it is we want to go and that's what brings us to the vision statement and a set of goals and objectives for the comprehensive, comprehensive plan. We, as Doug noted, we had a lot of good community participation, not just at the meeting in October when we presented the, our first draft of the goals and objectives, but all through this process since we've begun it, when we had our, our community meetings out, out in the county, we've had very good attendance from, from citizens, from elected officials, from, from some of you all, and certainly from our, our very capable steering committee. All of that information was captured, studied, compared against each other, and that's where we try to bring together the community's expression of its, of its desires into, into some definable format, some, something that, that we can use to actually guide the rest of our planning process, to get us through the comprehensive plan, and then on past the comprehensive plan as we look at the development regulations. We had so much information and a lot of opinions and a lot of potential value statements, vision statements expressed to us, that we've kind of broken this apart into a couple of, into a couple of pieces. I wonder which button I push? Hmm? Push the button, Tim. Wait a second. Wait, wait a second. That guy, not this, this, but maybe, maybe, which one? It's still this one, this, this one. Okay. Thank you. We initially put together a potential vision statement that was this long, it was yea-long, and it was, it was probably too long for a, for a concise statement that would sort of distill our planning efforts down into, into a sentence or two. So what we, what we're proposing to do is actually take, there's just again so much good information, we don't want to turn anything back, so we're, we've decided to propose a value statement that, that gives some background to what the vision for the plan will be. So what we've done is taken again a lot of these comments that we received from the public and from talking with, well, not just the public, but we had a lot of meetings with identified stakeholder groups, with the different communities within the county. We talked with the Chamber of Commerce and the home builders and we've spoken a lot with the Watershed Association, just all the stakeholder groups that, that we could identify. And we've come up, we've broken this value statement down into about three or five, five sections, which, and everybody's got, you've got copies of this, right? Because I don't want to read to you, you don't, I don't think you want me to read to you. That? The value state, well, I'll make sure that you get copies of this PowerPoint presentation if nothing else. And what we note up front is that people tell us what we've, what we got in that first sentence up there, people really wanted to emphasize this, that Rutherford County is a unique place within Middle Tennessee, with all the growth and development that takes place, with the ever-expanding presence of the metro Nashville area, a lot of people wanted to be sure that we understood your desires to maintain Rutherford County as its own unique location within Middle Tennessee. So we've noted that up front in our value statement and let everything else flow out from there, that the values and the beliefs that we hear you all expressing is what will guide the rest of the comprehensive plan and all of the planning efforts. We've noted that land, of course, this is a comprehensive plan and it's to look at a lot of aspects of county government, but it will, it will boil down to use of land and we recognize that land is the one thing, as they say, they're not making anymore, it is the one finite resource that you have in the county that everybody has a stake in and that everybody can benefit from. So we note that land being our most precious resource for use within the county leads us to, to recognize what's, what the land is composed of, the communities that make up the county, the communities that make up the land, as well as all of the natural features, pastures, waterways, lakes, streams, and forests. And that who you are is sort of defined by your situation and by your context, who you are, your sense of place defined by your resources. So what we'll do is propose growth policies and growth, a growth path that's consistent with the values and with the goals and objectives that will come out of those values. Supporting growth is sustainable, provides a sustainable meaning of both environmentally and economically, providing employment opportunities and economic stability, and reflects the character and the scale, the size, and the form of your communities. All of those words are behind this vision statement. We feel that the vision statement is supported by the general value statement that, that we compile. Rutherford County seeks sustainable growth that protects our natural and historic resources while preserving your values, qualities, and culture. From the vision statement, and again, the vision statement is very central to, to the, to the planning process itself, because as we develop growth scenarios, as we look at different alternatives for growth in the future, we're going to come back to the vision statement. We'll compare everything against the vision statement and the values that we were told up front are important to this county. So we've come up with a set of goals and objectives that we believe fulfills the, the vision statement and that provides a little more specificity to what we mean by some of the terms and how we will again evaluate the growth scenarios, growth alternatives we're going to look at in the future, and then also how we will use those to, to help advise you on your development regulations, on your zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and everything else that you use to, to manage growth. Up at the top of each of these slides in the sort of orangey-pinkish box is the actual goal statement, that's sort of a topic heading for, for, for the rest of the policies that flow under it. And first is, is a policy that would recognize that land is a limited resource and that growth should occur where, where land use and public services can be economically provided to them. And again, I'm not going to read all, I don't want to read these policies to you, but, but we'll note that all of these policies fall back under this general heading of, and I hate to use a cliched term, but smart growth, and I don't mean smart growth in any particular sense, other than smart growth, using your brain, using your, using the information in front of you to make decisions about where and how growth will occur. Some of these policies, again, and Doug noted, we got a lot of feedback after we presented our initial draft, so if you had looked at any of those initial drafts of the, the goals and objective statements, this version now is, is different, because we've incorporated the comments and the recommendations we received from the public, from the steering committee members, and, and from anyone who had, who had a, some input to this. And especially, I will point out the bottom one, because that is one that was really made very clear to us that, that people wanted to see included, and that is recognizing that we're setting policies that are going to guide growth and development in the future, but there are, but there are rights inherent with current property owners, that people that own land now, that have certain expectations for the use of land, and we've got to find that balance between respecting those current property rights, but also looking ahead 10, 20 years into the future, irregardless of property ownership. So there's going to be a balance to be struck there, but we hope that the, that by including this as a specific objective in furthering the goal of smart land use will help us as your consulting team and, and help you then as the county later on, again, seek to always maintain that balance, and it's not going to always be a perfectly level balance, but you'll know at least there is a balance. I know you, some of you may have just seen this for the first time, anything catch your eye? If you've got any questions, I'll just stand here and talk to somebody, shuts me up, so if you've got any questions, ask, ask them, make a comment or a suggestion, anything you see, happy to hear it. Smart use of land means that land will be used obviously for different purposes, and one of them is going to be for economic employment, business opportunities. And we want to see to it that our plan creates an environment that's attractive to business and investment, but also encourages existing businesses, existing business owners to stay in Rutherford County, continue their investment in Rutherford County, make their plans for expansion and growth here in Rutherford County. So this is where we wanted to make sure that we had good input from, from the business community and, and we've, we have received that, and we want to see to it that this plan, while it's not an economic development plan per se, and it's, it certainly touches on a lot of areas outside of economics, we want to know, we want to be sure that this plan's policies are, are generally viewed as being supportive of, of a quality business environment, and again, makes Rutherford County an attractive place to people, for people not only to live, but to do business, invest their money here within the county. So we're encouraging a lot of coordination and cooperation with various agencies within the county, such as the chamber, and also making sure that you, that you work with all of the cities in the county and economic development, of course, as you're, as you're already doing, building on the local, the presence of Middle Tennessee State University and the excellent reputation of the Rutherford County School System, as well as a driver and draw for businesses. Anything in this list you've got questions, concerns about, you like or don't like? Yes, ma'am?
Can you give me an example of this bullet point? It's the second to last, designate and reserve optimal employment areas from inappropriate development using the comprehensive plan. Can you just give me an example of what you, what you're thinking behind that sentence?
There are different ways that you can define what an optimal employment area is, but, but in, and we've not gone through all that process yet, what we're generally thinking there is that for those areas where there's either already existing grouping or presence of businesses, or maybe it's an area somewhere along one of the main corridors, maybe even along one of the main, along the interstate at one of the interchanges, where maybe it's, it's open, there's nothing there yet, that through collaboration and, and talking among the community, if we decide that's where, that, that is an appropriate spot, given access, given utilities for future business or industrial growth, that we want to make sure that there's nothing in the, through the plan, or maybe even through the subsequent zoning, that's going to, that's going to throw, that's going to cause problems later on. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to recommend you ultimately just zone an area just for one particular kind of use, it may wind up being some sort of mixed-use area. But we want to keep in mind that, that there are, you know, a low-density residential subdivision in the middle of 200 acres that you've been planning for a future, you know, office-industrial park is, you know, that's, those are extreme examples and anybody would probably red-flag something like that, but, but in looking at, there, there are probably some uses on the extremes that are not very compatible anymore, a lot of uses are compatible and with good site design and control measures, you can, you can mix and match some uses, but, but we, we want to let the plan go into as much detail as the community's willing to support on designating areas for, for general employment-type growth, for general business-type support development, as opposed to again, areas that are going to be just for exclusively, say, low-density residential. So again, that's sort of an extreme, top-of-my-head answer. Any, any other questions? Anything in there catch your eye? Something we also heard that was emphasized to us was that while Rutherford County as a whole has an identity as a county, there are a lot of places within the county, and not just the incorporated cities, but communities within the county that are important in their own right, they're important to the history of this county and to the area, and that people felt some of those areas may be slipping away. Some of them already have. Some of the old, old communities, they are already gone. They were absorbed by one of the cities, they're underwater, they're, you know, they're bisected by a major road and, and lost, but that people wanted to try to, to take the time now while we can, recognize the rural communities, recognize that they in themselves are what contribute to the quality of life in Rutherford County, contribute to the attractiveness of people to move in here. So we want to use the plan to denote those areas within the county, again, not necessarily incorporated areas, areas probably outs, maybe outside of urban growth boundaries, that are completely, completely within the jurisdiction of the county, identify those areas and see if there are ways that you can help strengthen and preserve those rural communities, preserve their differentiation, differentiated way of life from, say, in Murfreesboro or in Laverne, Smyrna, and, and help those communities remain viable. But again, we believe that's going to be an important part of any county's plan, is not, is to look, is to look at those areas that are outside of the traditional, you know, urban-type areas for, for their importance and to preserve them. Preserving open space. We want to make sure that we, that we look at including, when you include open space in a plan, there've been a tendency in the past in comprehensive plans and even through, through some zoning, that open space was just sort of that land that was left over, that while we've, we've picked the bones clean for developable property, and just anything that's left, because it's either extremely rocky or it's 20% slope, or it's floodplain, there's your open space, and there's your open space, and that's what we're going to preserve and protect as our quote, open space, greenways. We know now that that's probably, that that is not the most effective way to plan for open space, that the use of land for, either for active recreational or passive recreational purposes, or even just as farm, just as open pasture land, is a use in and of itself as a use in its own right, and we want to plan for, for smart use of open space alongside planning for future areas for residential, for business purposes. So we want to look at, at the possibility of establishing land trusts that allow folks to still perceive some economic benefit off of their land, but doesn't put it in the, in the queue for development, or using conservation easements for the, for the same purposes, work, making sure that you're working closely with all the cities on developing a cohesive greenway, green infrastructure-type system. Looking at a pilot process maybe for some scenic corridor management, and I think we noted this in maybe one of the previous, previous goals as well, is establishing some, looking at some of the main arteries through the county and that connects different areas of the county, maybe connects a rural area with one of the cities, and see about the possibility of some, of doing a pilot project for, for some sort of either scenic preservation, some sort of corridor management plan, a gateway plan on one or more of the, of the routes in, that again, gives credence to the notion that open space in and of itself is, is a, is a use and is a, is a use worth pursuing. County's not only made up of the county and its cities, but of the neighborhoods within the communities, and creating strong neighborhoods is, is, is the basis of forming a strong, a strong plan in and of itself. So we want to look at ways that create, that allow, that allow different neighborhoods within communities to, to, to grow and to flourish, but also to, to increase connectivity where we can, not allow, not have neighborhoods be quite so isolated from each other, this adds to quality of life, it also is important for emergency services and for, for purposes like that. But we want to look at ways again that allow communities to, neighborhoods within communities differentiate themselves but be connected, providing adequate bike and pedestrian access. I think at our NPO meeting the other day, didn't they notice, note Doug, that Rutherford County was second in already in the amount of bike-ped ways behind Davidson in all the areas, something like that. Already you, you've got a very strong system in place for, for connecting people and places by ways other than the automobile. I wish I had an alternative on the way down here tonight, but I did not. But, but even for connectivity, but again, for, for the purpose of, of actual transportation, but also for increasing community cohesiveness among neighborhoods, let's look at connecting at people with ways other than just the automobile that really gets you where you're going but keeps you isolated. Discouraging development that creates isolated islands in our rural landscape, this might go back into some of the discussion of appropriate and inappropriate areas for, for extending infrastructure, encouraging higher-density development. Mixing uses that, that still creates a community and fulfills the notion of some of the, of a character area, different areas within the county that will look and feel differently. And then, and then making sure this school, and I, and I know you already know this, schools obviously are usually the foundation of a community, especially a rural community, the school forms the heart of it probably physically, as well as psychologically. So we want to be sure that, that as your school board works, works hard and makes its plans for the future, that your development plans take that into account, and that also that the school board has a good, solid base of information from the community planning side that they can take into account as they plan future school sites, so that, that schools are, are supportive of neighborhoods. There was a policy, a proposed, yes, policy earlier on that talked about where communities, where schools will be located, recognize that they're an anchor, and that other community services that are going to be provided, could they also be provided in proximity to that school, if not adjacent to the property or around it, providing emergency services, providing, I've seen communities that, a couple libraries and community centers along with school properties and school sites, so that you have a community, a real community anchor, that you, that then the, it's not just a collection of subdivisions with, with a school on the fringe, but you've got a really more integrated type of development. Along with the notion that in some cases you may have been, you may have lost or be losing some of the, the feel of the older communities, the more rural areas in the county, there's the feeling that a lot of your individual historic and cultural resources, some of the natural features that have always been present in the county before there was development, some of those may have already been compromised or could be compromised by continued growth in the future. So we want to be sure that as you're, as, as you're looking forward to continued growth and development in the county, that you're making sure that you have identified, recognized, and sought a way to preserve those things that again, make you unique as, as a county. What are those resources, those places within Rutherford County that exist nowhere else? Are there, are the, can we put guidelines into place that help you preserve and protect those, those resources and that add value then to the development that goes around those resources? Looking at possibly use of overlay districts possibly, you already used that in the form of floodplain zoning, that's an overlay-type district. A transfer development right program, that's an idea that gets kicked around, around a lot in Tennessee, has not been very, very, very well utilized just yet, but we're, we're going to propose the use of a program here that can hopefully again allow folks to have the economic incentive, the economic benefit of their property without necessarily actually developing on the property. That's, that's what a development program will do, send development rights to an area that maybe is a little more suitable for development, but lets that property owner gain some economic benefit. Right to farm protection and development regulations, Tennessee state law already protects farms, agricultural use of land within zoning, but will, will not rely on state law to, to preserve and promote the use of, of lands for agricultural purposes, we'll see to it that it finds its way into the plan as well. Transportation. Providing transportation options, again, that's something that gets talked about quite a bit, and, and it's, I think sometimes we see the idea of anything other than automobile transportation is such a large issue, that it really, it's really something to be discussed and debated and, and maybe passed down the road a little bit. The, and, and as far as the large investments that have to be made to really bring in, you know, bus rapid transit, to bring in commuter rail, yes, those are large capital expenditures. What are other things we can do as well that provide transportation options for people? Any sort of non-motorized, non-vehicular, non-automobile-type traffic, transportation, whether it's bike and pedestrian access, use the use of greenways and green infrastructure to allow connections between communities, that way- to allow connections between communities that way, as well as supporting the smart use of, of, of more urban type transportation choices such as bus, such as commuter rail. The, the initial studies have, have been underway and have been done for some time, showing feasibility of different types of transportation between Nashville and Murfreesboro. So, the foundation is there and for, for people to build on. Just, and something as simple as making sure that you've, you've dedicated appropriate right of way. When you look at subdivision plaits, and this goes back to your major thoroughfare plan, your major road plan, making sure that you have adequately designated those roads for, for future use that will be upgraded at some point in the future, that maybe will move up from a minor residential to a collector status at some point in the future. Have you adequately planned for your right of way? What's in your right of way? Is it just two foot, I mean, two, two travel lanes and a little bit of shoulder and some ditch? Have we built in a little more right of way that allows bike lanes where appropriate? That allows for sidewalks to be put in? So, so, there are just, there are small steps that you can take to make sure that your, that your communities and that the developments in your community are as friendly to various forms of transportation. Those steps are just as important, again, as some of these big, big ticket items that will come through when we're all riding maglev to Walmart. Growth cannot really occur at any substantive pace without the appropriate infrastructure, your roads and your water and your sewer, gas lines. Also, the other types of infrastructure that are, are not just tied to a location on the ground, protective services, emergency services, and then the other types of supporting services, community facilities, eventually parks and recreation and those type of things. But, and this is sort of where growth can come home to roost with your local populace, is that every time you add, when you add people, when you add structures, when you add vehicles, you add to the, to the, to the uses that they require, you add to the costs that everyone bears, either in financial costs, which is usually what we measure, as well as costs, you know, travel times and whatnot, but, but especially the financial costs. So, the infrastructure is one thing that everybody sort of shares about development. And, and we believe that the comprehensive plan ought to take a good, clear-eyed view of the, of the services, the infrastructure that you currently have. What sort of infrastructure types and levels would you need in the future to support the kind of growth and development that you probably will get, you could well get, or that you want to get? What's the best way to pay for those services? And, how do you make the most efficient use of them? So, it, it, it's without pre-designating any, any finding yet, we want to put, we want to go ahead and propose some policies that will at least let you step back just a little bit and have a look at how different things operate. The objective up there about step systems, got a good bit of attention, both in our preliminary discussions with folks, then as we propose some wording on our, on our goals and objectives. And, I think we've settled on, on a pretty decent balance here of what to do, and that is to, again, not presuppose any particular change being made, but let's step back and take a look on the step systems, on the use of, of individual septic tanks, and on the, and where sewer is being used. Are, are your regulations, are your policies those that will best support the type of growth and development that you want in the future and that you can, that you will wind up paying for in the future? So, so, we certainly think it's worthwhile to take, and again, look at not so much the, but look at the policy implications of what you're trying to do, not so much even where, just the science of where would we, where should we do step systems versus where should we do allow only public sewer, traditional sewer systems, or where will we allow onsite individual septic tanks? And, there's as much a policy part to that as therein, as there is just a hard science to it as well. Community and regional partnerships, you know, you're, 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 you're in this county with the, with the municipalities, they pay county taxes too, and they're all part of the county. We want to make sure that this comprehensive plan process reaches out to, to the cities and to the counties, but also to the community around you and to the counties and the larger middle Tennessee region around you. Look for ways to, to consolidate services if it's feasible and if it's palatable to folks. What are the monetary differences, what's practical and what's not? Make sure that you've got a lot of collaboration and excellent working relationship with those other boards and commissions, especially those that, like the school board, that represent a large portion of expenditure in the county and that also are so important to, to people. Making sure that you've got a good working relationship with the cities, so when it comes to development within the urban growth boundaries. That you've at least got a lot of open dialogue between yourselves and the cities as they look at their expansion plans and what they want to do as, as individual cities. And, ensuring county development decision-making is transparent, fair, and accountable to residents, residents and taxpayers, certainly believe in that. We want to, we'll add some more policy, some more objectives to, to this goal, but for the moment, we want, we want to propose the, that we reach out and use all the technologies available to us. And, we've tried that, we've, we've done that through this comprehensive planning process. The county has done an excellent job maintaining the website where we've had our surveys up. They're gone now, they aren't, the surveys are down. Or is it still up? Still up. You can react on the blog that a lot of people use, as well as just the timely posting of our reports and our findings as we go along. Make sure the internet is, is used as much as possible. We've noted too, that for, for planning commission members, you'll be, you will have a tool now that you've really not had in the past. So, we would, we would hope that as you do your, as you fulfill your public chapter eight sixty-two of responsibilities each year, that part of your four hours of training will be on the use of a comprehensive plan, how to, how to interpret it, how to maintain it, and how to ultimately upgrade it and amend it. Whoa, that's the last slide. So, that is the nutshell, version of our vision and value statement and our proposed goals and objectives so far. We will, we're happy to take any input that any of you all have and incorporate it as well. What we'll do after, after the planning commission, I believe these, this packet will also go to the county commission, that's correct, and then they will ultimately find their way to the steering committee for, for their agreement and their inclusion in the, in the draft plan.
Questions? Next question. This is Doug.
Thank you much, Mr. Chairman. Hello, I will. Looking through this, goals and objectives of this thing, I mean, it, it has every wish, every thought, every inkling of any fathom of everything in the world in this plan. Is this plan reachable? Are these goals obtainable? Are the objectives here obtainable? We've, we've hired you to, to do a job for us, and it's a pretty extensive job without half of this that's in this plan right here, or, or your goals or objectives. So, and it sounds good, no doubt, but I want to look at the, the other side too. I mean, what, you could spend a couple years in each one of these sections, you know, and really get it down into a, a plan. And, we're never going to have a plan that is bulletproof, so to speak, but we're going to have a great plan at the end of this adventure here that's going to provide this county a plan for many years, many years to come. And, it'll have to be enhanced again later on and, and brought back up to speed, or we do it along as we go along through the planning years and growth years of Rutherford County. But, is this obtainable for your company, your organization, and to, to be able to put this together for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I believe it is. And, and, and believe me, as we put together, as we took the comments that we had heard and put them into the goals and objectives, I mean, yeah, there was an eye kept to that too. Are we setting up a bar that, that is not reachable technically for us to be able to put something together? Really, I've got the easier part of this. I've got to propose a plan and recommend it to you. You all have to take it and live with it, and then you all have to, to see to it that it does fulfill itself. You as the planning commission especially, and I, I spent a lot of years with planning commissions, so I've got a lot of, simply for the job that you all do, and I understand how you all, some of the challenges that you all have to face. But, you as a planning commission, and then the broader community, really have the challenge of carrying forward with whatever recommendations we come out with and whatever proposals we have, because we'll point the way, we'll, we'll, we'll maybe point you to a toolbox, we'll point you to some resources and recommend that you do this, 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 and this. You all will have to do it. Your leadership will have to say to it, yes, this is what we're going to do. The public and all stakeholders will have to get behind it and say, yes, this is what we're going to do. So, we believe it's doable. There's nothing we've proposed in here that hasn't been done successfully in other places for what that's worth. Because it, what really matters is what you all want to do. You hit on a good point though, that the plan is not a, is not static, you write it in stone, lock it up, and never touch it again, and it has to be fulfilled the way it's written five years from now, ten years from now. No, that's, a plan is a living document, and what we're trying to give you is a baseline, where do we start from? Everybody kind of come to an agreement on, on first base, on home plate, really. Then, we'll move on to first base and around, around the diamond. But, yes, I believe that everything in here is technically possible for us to produce in a plan, but, and I wouldn't want to propose anything to you in a plan that if you came to, if you came back six months later and you're looking at this and you go, no, there's no way, there's just no way. So, that's why we're bringing something like this to you now. We want to see to, we want to get your take on the sort of, the big view, the vision and the values, and then starting to narrow it down to the goals, and then a little more specific objectives, because then that will really tell us what kind of growth scenarios we want to propose, and then you all will select your preferred one. So, it, it, it is doable, but it's, it's going to be work on, on our part and on your part.
Tim, when we look at the final document, the words, to make it attainable that Steve's talking about, were words such as discourage development that functions to create. Those words still be in there? Encourage land to be reserved for, for schools or in high-growth areas? Those words are still, still being there? Discourage, encourage, or was it going to be cut and dried?
Well, it, it will be whatever, I guess ultimately, the steering committee tells us how they would like to see it worded.
Tim, could I, I'm sorry, could I interject this real quick? Along with the goals and objectives, as Tim said, as we go through this process, there'll be other policies that'll be identified, and also more specific policies where encourage it by, like encourage development in these areas by A, B, C, or D. It'll be further refined as we go along. Something else to keep in mind is that the final product will also have implementation strategies of how to achieve a lot of those goals, you know, similar to what I just, what I just mentioned. So, it's not going to just give us a bunch of ideas that are just kind of pie in the sky kind of ideals that would be great to, to attain to, but it's going to lay out actual strategies that we could use to attain some of those things. And, it may require ultimately other studies that staff undertakes, other projects we undertake on a year-to-year basis. You know, we give you a year-end report, which we'll be doing at the next meeting of some of the activities we've done over the last twelve months. It would, it could be that, you know, some of the, the issues and some of the strategies that are identified in the plan become some of our future projects that, that we work on as staff. So, just to kind of tail on what, what Tim was saying. Thank you.
And, the thing about a comprehensive plan as well, Mr. Chairman, is it's, the plan itself is not a regulation, it's not a regulatory tool. It is an expanded vision statement in a lot of ways. And, and as you all probably know, as planning commissions, some of your, some of your ability to get things done is through a power of persuasion as much as it's through being able to invoke a regulation, to be able to sign a plat or withhold a signature. That, that it's, it's, to get some things done to discourage or to encourage certain actions, it may just be a matter of expressing your preferences. And, working with individuals as they come before you with development proposals to try to shape and guide what they're proposing in a way that meets their goals but meets your goals. So...
Encourage A, B, C, or D?
Yes.
Gary, you have?
I've got a couple of questions. First question is, what is, what is the timeline where you'll have the first part of this product to us?
The, well, I mean, we've gotten, you know, a certain part of it already done, the existing conditions report, and, and then moving through this process takes us probably through more than, than half of the actual planning process itself. Beyond this, we will, we're going to produce, I've engaged our computer modelers, which is a interesting process in and of itself. We have our people engaged who are actually going to take a lot of this information and digitize it, and boom, turn out, start turning out maps. So, that in and of itself is going to be a distinct phase of, of this process. We're getting, we're having some meetings this week, as a matter of fact, with, with MTSU on, with Dr. Penn on, on his fiscal review, because, again, we want to have some, some, some objective ways to measure what's being proposed and what you ultimately will decide. But, we're still looking at, you know, late spring-ish, early summer-ish to have, part of it will depend as well on, on the county's reaction of what we propose, obviously. I mean, we could propose what we think is a fantastic product, and the steering committee goes, eh, we're not sure about this. So, that could, but the plan is to have our part of it, to have these scenarios laid out, and to have a public workshop then that allows us to start selecting the preferred scenario down, down into the spring, up into the summer, and getting toward a final plan then.
And, did I understand you to say that these goals and objectives are the public's goals and objectives that, that y'all gotten from the public meetings, and also the steering committee members?
Well, we've had input, the steering committee has not, has not really weighed in formally. I mean, they've all seen this, and a few of them have provided...
We've actually, of course, we had a, a community meeting back in October, a number of the committee members were there, and these were originally presented. We've sent these to all of them, we've received comments back from them, I've even had lunch with a couple of them to discuss some of the issues, and we've sent them all the revised, what you're seeing tonight. They've all, they've all got copies of this as well.
But, no, we did not just transcribe what people gave us and then turned it back into that. No, this, this was a collaboration with, with all of your consulting team, looking at, yes, what we heard at the public meetings, but also just what we, what we've experienced in other places in, in both just wording of things and also in an approach to things. So, this is, this is our, this is your consulting team's recommendations to you based on what we've heard.
And, is there going to be any more public input as far as public meetings through the steering committee process as well?
Yes, sir, there will. Yes, sir. We'll have not only the steering committee meetings, but I believe we'll have one, one more large public workshop, open house type session where we'll, where we'll review the alternative growth scenarios. So, yes, the public's going to have a chance, multiple chances to weigh in.
Something else, something else the staff has done during this process, we've taken the plan, if you will, or the, wherever we were in the process, out to various community events, the volunteer fire department, fish fries, ham breakfasts, those kind of things. I anticipate we'll be doing more of that as we get further on into this process.
And, if you, if you have not been to Doug's, the website that he has set up for this comprehensive plan, and if you, you're on the internet at all, browse over to that site and have a look at it. We could use more input. We need some more involvement from the, from, from, from you all who know something about some growth and development, as well as just from, from the public in general, on our, on the blog questions, it's about time for me to update the blog, and, and even on the survey, if it's still up, if you haven't filled out the survey, fill, go ahead and fill it out. Recommend your friends, family members, colleagues, whatever, fill this out as well. The more responses we get, the better we feel about, about the final product.
Mike, you got a question?
Yeah, this is a little bit to your question, Gary. Two of the things that I saw come out of both the committee and the public meetings was, how do we protect private property rights to do what you want? These were overriding themes that, on the committee came out and then came out from the public too. And then, how do you, how do you preserve the character, some of the rural character, and where do you do it? And, how do you balance those two? And, not, it's, it's just achieving a balance, I think will be, will be the overriding thing. And, those were two, I mean, those were the two that struck me. And then, you know, back to the, and it's a cliche, the smart development, where do you do that and how do you do it, you know? And, I, I think that'll be probably one of the overriding themes that comes out of this. And, do we have another, for the viewing public, do we have another meeting set, Doug?
We have it tentatively set for February the first. We haven't done the, the whole media blitz, so to speak, but, but tentatively at this point, that's when the next steering committee meeting is...
Very smoothly. I'm going to jinx it now. Very smoothly. Actually, very smoothly. We've, you know, but I can't say I've been involved in a lot of projects where it was just really contentious and just fell, and, you know, the wheels fell off. That doesn't generally happen, because generally by the time you, a community is to the point of either wanting to produce or update a plan, and especially once you budgeted for it, there's some commitment to it, and it generally pushes on through to the end. But what you've got here, we've had, we've had good cooperation from all county departments that we've had, that we've contacted, among the communities themselves, that very positive reaction. All the stakeholders have been very engaged, and I've stayed in contact with several people throughout this process that are very interested in it. And you guys on the Steering Committee have been, have been very good as well about being engaged, being interested, asking questions. So no, I think this is, Rockwood has gone, has gone very well and continue to do so.
If I may, before, I'm sorry, Will, to cut you off, but I meant to, when I was identifying some of the Steering Committee members before, Mike Vaught is also the Planning Commission's representative to the Steering Committee. I didn't want to leave you out.
I appreciate y'all's work. When I've had a question, if I call one of y'all, you know, I've gotten answers and packets in the mail and that kind of stuff, so I appreciate y'all's work.
Well, I understand it's gone well so far, but do you think we're to the painful part at all yet? I mean, I listened to your presentation. It talks about smart growth and contiguous development and things, you know, where the infrastructure's in place, and talks about property owners' rights, talks about right to farm, and it's all roses and cherries right here, but nobody's felt any pain yet. Nobody out there's been told, you know, well, hey, we don't think this is a good spot for a subdivision anymore, because we've been living in 25 years of the Wild West, more or less. Anything goes, you know? If you've got a step site, a step system site, or soil that'll perk, you could do a subdivision. I don't care if it was in the middle of nowhere, and that was probably wrong, you know, and but we're going to have to rein that in. That's our whole purpose of this, but we're going to be taking rights away from people. And that's when we're going to have the people coming out of the woodwork, when they realize, hey, you know, I'm out here 20 miles from the square and I can't have a R-15 development anymore, or that's what I envision happening, you know? And so I just wonder if we're to the painful part yet, because I know we've got to do this, but nobody's been told no yet. All this, this talks about every stakeholder having their rights as far as this, but we've got to get to the painful part at some point in time, and that's when, I'm afraid, the wheels are going to start to rattle anyway.
I think part of our, part of our deal on the committee will be identifying how you do that and coming up with a framework, not specifics maybe, but how you do that and what areas you do it in, some guidelines, not specifics, you know, to try to accomplish those goals.
You're right. There are hard choices yet to be made. Yes, there are. Will it be painful? It depends on how high your pain threshold is. It's, you know, you'll notice it, but again, that's why we're trying to establish as much as we can, get as much dialogue going as we can in the generalities, and now starting to get specifics. So, I mean, if there's going to be some problems later on, then let's go ahead and bring them out. Let's don't wait till later on. Let's go ahead and try to hash them out now and see what, what it would take to have everybody at least understand what we're trying to do here. No, you'll never get 100% vote of confidence on this or any other plan, but if people can at least understand what all went into it and what we're trying to accomplish, they can at least understand it, even if they don't care for it.
Doug, you probably can answer this question better than, on this. The way I foresee this, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is kind of like what the, when the city done the Salem use plan and the Blackman use plan, and it kind of had people from the private sector, public sector, the area and those areas. Is that kind of what this plan is going to be taking, done like?
I mean, basically, what, that's exactly what's going on. The Salem and the Blackman plans were both, they're considered sub-area plans because they're, they were more of a smaller identified region, if you will. What we're looking at here is the overall unincorporated area. The process really is similar to what they went through in those two plans. This is just a larger area.
Basically, certain areas be color-coded, you know?
It's future land use recommended. Right, exactly. What they're working on or coming close to finishing at this point is what's called the baseline growth scenario. If things stay the way they are, what could we expect to see in the next 15 to 20 years? From there, based on that, as well as the goals and objectives, the fiscal analysis that is going to be done, everything goes into it, they'll start identifying, okay, alternative growth scenarios. If we go with a alternative A, where we see more conservation, I'm just throwing ideas out there for now, and I'm not specifics, but, you know, alternative B may be looking at more nodal-type development, growth nodes, something like that. Alternative C may be something a little different. So that's, that's the process.
And I'm assuming that when these maps come about each quarter of the county, will be different meetings like was done in the past, like last Keds had one, Rockville area had one, Smyrna had one type?
Either that or just have one big community-type meeting where all of them are laid out there. We hadn't quite gotten that far as far as the planning of where the meetings and how that's going to work at this point.
Well, I foresee one big community meeting would be kind of chaotic. If you can make it in four different, you know, quarters of the county, I think your meetings are going to be more personalized. People are going to get their questions answered. If it's one meeting, chaos will come about and questions won't get answered. False information's going to get out there, whether you're for it or against it or whatever type deals. And I think people will get their questions answered a whole lot better if it's in smaller settings, more personalized, with questions to be answered.
I mean, that's, that's, it's a good comment. It is, I mean, it's a good point.
Okay, other questions? Yes, ma'am.
For me, the part of the goals and objectives that really jumped off the page is the piece under infrastructure and the cost of preparation. I'm curious to know what level of detail you're planning on going into that, because that seems to be everybody's, one of everybody's hot buttons is, how does growth pay for itself? Who pays for what? What comes first, the chicken or the eggs, the subdivision or the school, you know, et cetera? So, and also from what I understand from the County Commission is that, you know, their hands are really tied in terms of, you know, how they can go about raising funds to provide infrastructure. And so I'm just curious, at what level of detail are you really going to explore that, and what level of detail are you going to be able to give some strategies? Or do you foresee giving strategies?
We, I don't know that yet. I don't know the level of detail yet. That's one of the, one of the reasons we're having some meetings this week and over the next couple of weeks on how to realistically attach a financial review, a fiscal review to some of these growth scenarios coming up, and get a sense of exactly what, are there real substantive differences in what would have to be financially supported to see any of these alternatives come to pass? And part of that is not only just the reaction to the type of growth and development that you want to see, but even a little more proactive approach where you say, well, but if we, if we did provide some sort of either incentive or encouragement to a type of development in a particular area that changes growth patterns, that doesn't just react to the projections that are already there, but actually changes the projections, could we, could we see a payoff later on in terms of a reduced cost of a service or of a facility? And I know that's, I'm not, I'm not providing you the specifics you want because I don't have them yet. We'll take it into as much detail as we think is prudent. I mean, we could run numbers and throw them out there, and then who knows if we're right or wrong for five or 10 years. I don't think we want to do that. We want to maybe, if we have to keep things general in order to be accurate, we'll keep them general and then use the plan to help set up some ways that as you go along in the future, you as Planning Commissions and as the staff works with development in the future, that you could refine some of these financial measures down, add more information to them, and get a little more specific as you go on, on what the long-term costs of growth are. But there'll be some, some things that are looked at typically in other communities and through this computer modeling that we're going to, that we're going to try to customize to, Rutherford County, and again, starting back with what Dr. Penn has worked up for us in his initial cut.
And then I just had one piece of immediate feedback. On your very last bullet where you talk about continuing education for the Planning Commission, I think it's also really important that we add there the county commissioners, because we just simply make recommendations to them, and on any given vote, without any additional information than a public hearing, they can reverse any recommendation we make.
I think I'll go ahead and revise that to note that we want to establish continuing and ongoing education opportunities for all civic boards and elected bodies. That, why single you all out, even though you all have, you really are the front line with growth and development?
Well, I really think it's, you need to specifically mention the county commissioners, and the reason that I say that is because they have the final say-so.
Yes, it is.
That's where the buck stops, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any comments?
No, all we're really looking forward from the Planning Commission at this point. Of course, we wanted to give you an update as to where we were in the process, but at the same time, if you like the direction we're going, just a vote of endorsement, I think, would be appropriate at this point. I don't know if any of the Steering Committee members had anything they wanted to add to anything.
And what else we speak? They're not jumping up.
One opportunity at least.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to, I know the Steering Committee members are working pretty hard, and a lot of people think that they get paid to do these type of things, but they're not getting paid. They're doing this for free of their time, and I want to let Tim know I appreciate the work that they're doing on that, so. That's the reason I asked the question, while I want to make sure that these are parts of the goals and objectives that the Steering Committee has got as well as the public, and from what I understand, they are. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send this on to, I guess...
I would just say, you know, that you endorse the direction that these goals and objectives are showing at this point, and that we plan on having this presentation for the County Commission next month, so.
Just a vote of endorsement?
Yeah, this doesn't require a public hearing or anything, so this will just be under, you know, our report.
Well, I'll make a motion, we endorse this project and send it on.
Okay, you have a second? Rich, you second. All for the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay. Dale?
No report, sir.
No report.
Just one, a comment real quick. Mr. Chairman, on your tables today, you'll see a, not necessarily a packet, but a revised landscape and buffer yard regulations. We had a meeting today with our landscape subcommittee. You'll recall, we brought this to you about a month or so ago for your comments. There were a number of comments we had from a peer review. After going over those comments, you'd asked us to bring those back to the Steering, I'm sorry, the landscape subcommittee for their discussion and then recommendation. We have that, and we've had that meeting today, and what you have before you is the outcome of that. Just take this with you. We're going to discuss this at the next day meeting. We're not planning on discussing it tonight. So if you would, just go ahead and take this and then bring it with you at the next meeting, and we'll discuss it at that time.
Okay, very good. Well, enough done, a motion. Rich?
We sent them out by mail, I believe.
Well, we'll try to...
Somebody run over your mailbox, Richie? Somebody run over your mailbox?
Do you want to mention the budget committee?
We'll just appoint that.
Just go ahead and...
We'll just appoint a budget committee for the next day meeting.
Okay, yeah, just at the next, yeah, at the next day meeting, we're going to be appointing a budget committee for the 2010, 2011 fiscal year budget. We had our meeting today with Mayor Burgess and the rest of the department heads, and so we know the direction we're going at the same, along that lines. I spoke with the chairman this morning, or yeah, this morning, about the nominating committee. We'll be doing the nominations for chair and vice chair at the next meeting as well.
Okay, anyone else? Emily, anybody?
Two weeks from now, it'll be the 25th.
You're going to take the motion? Second? Motion has a second. All of us should say aye.
Aye.